...thirteenth is called to order. Our first item on the agenda is administrative business. The calendar is up at the table if anyone's interested in it. It's also on the overhead, a busy November and December. Both school committee meetings as well as superintendent, thank you. Can you leave it there actually because in case anybody comes in, it's not till 6:35, so others might come in. Full slate of school committee meetings, superintendent forums, which are just starting to get scheduled, and the superintendent might talk about, and other events from community partners. Anything else that anybody wants to add to the calendar? Okay. Thank you, Robyn. Our second item is the consent agenda. We have two past records and a out-of-state student trip, the Lawrence eighth grade trip to New York City. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda? Ms. Stone, second by Dr. Jackson. So we have a motion to, for the consent agenda, Ms. Coyne, made by Ms. Stone, seconded by Dr. Jackson. All those in favor? It is unanimous of those of us who are here. Mr. Pollak is on a flight and he is going to get here just as soon as, I would say, his wings. I guess the flight's wings will carry him. So that is eight to zero. Our second item is subcommittee reports. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have six subcommittee reports and any additional liaisons and updates. So let's start with finance. Mr. Chang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The finance subcommittee met this past Monday and we went through the first quarter expenditure report. It looks like later on in the agenda, we'll have some time to speak to some of the highlights of that first quarter, so why don't I reserve it for that time? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Capital improvements, we're going to pinch-hit a little bit on this one. Ms. Charlofsky, do you want to start? I think Ms. Scotto and Ms. Cox have updates also.
Well, I guess I can sort of direct traffic.
Okay, that'll be traffic. Thank you.
Why don't we start out with the devotion school? Abby, if you want to update?
So the devotion school building committee will be meeting at eight o'clock, or has the meeting been moved to nine AM? No, 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 sorry. It's eight AM on November seventeenth in room 103 of Town Hall. We will be getting a project update that will include a presentation of the design progress, including drawings, and there will be an opportunity for a public comment at nine o'clock. I believe Ms. Charlofsky reported about the MSBA meetings on the devotion project at the last meeting, so we'll have further to update you at our next school committee meeting.
And then?
Oh, and, sorry, and then the MSBA will be meeting, the board meeting will be on the nineteenth. Where?
We hope that, well, we basically hope that they will give us the green light to move forward into schematic design. So that's, unless you have something more, Dr. Lupini?
No, no, making tail on that meeting, yes.
Okay. So that's devotion. Lawrence project is moving along. I don't know if there's much, I know that they've started coming out of the ground.
They have started coming out of the ground, in a good way, and there's nothing more to report. They seem to be on schedule. There are continuing frustrations over small, small things having to do with the usual parking and other things, but it's, the project itself is going quite well.
And from what I heard at the building commission meeting, it seems to be going fairly well with the neighbors. There's been a lot of communication back and forth.
There's been tremendous communication.
What's going to happen and when it's going to happen, so that...
The two-week advance notice on, on the building project continues every, every two weeks, and that's a, that's been a really terrific thing to have, for the community to have.
The old Lincoln School, there was a pre-construction meeting. The staging has gone up already to do some of the brickwork that needs to happen, and the contractors moving along there. So that's, that's a really good thing. The, hold on. There's elevators going in at Lawrence and Pierce. Two companies have submitted, and the general contractor will be coming back with bids in a week and a half. So that's sort of out there waiting to, to happen. Pierce Electrical Wiring is also another project that's going to be happening in the near, next summer, actually. I think that's it for now for capital, unless somebody has any questions.
No, I think the only other thing was that Mr. Pollak had asked that we emphasized was the ongoing discussion about the short-term space plan and the timeline to turn it into a plan. And I think at this point, the, that's, that is the ongoing discussion. I think we're going to be talking about the CIP, what's going to be included in the CIP at an upcoming meeting, and so that's the sort of next trigger for that. I think the other piece that he wanted to mention was the RFP for a ninth elementary school site consultant has gone out, and the deadline is November twentieth. Is that right, Mr.? I believe it's November twentieth, it's a week from today. And so if anyone has information about a consultant who might be particularly well-suited to do that work, please send them to, to the town because we're pretty, we're quite excited about that. And the last thing he wanted to mention was the statement of interest idea for the high school is still something that's being actively discussed for next April as a, as a priority because again, this, this year is about the visioning process for the high school, but given that these projects take so much time, the, the SOI for the high school for April is, is an active and high-priority discussion.
And the capital subcommittee will be meeting next?
Next week.
Week, November eighteenth, I think it is, from five to six.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Charlofsky, for pinch-hitting.
You're welcome.
Curriculum.
I used to do it all the time. Curriculum. Hold on one second, let me just get to my notes here. Of course, everything got moved. We had a curriculum meeting yesterday morning, which was really a fantastic meeting. No, I don't see, yeah, I do. So we, you have here at the desk a folder that was what the, a big part of our meeting was about, going over the, the different ways that we've progressed really in curriculum, in reporting to parents, in helping parents to understand the, the progress reports that they get, and in, and coordinating all of that with our essential learning expectations. It was, it's a big packet in here, but I think it's in, we only have the fourth grade here, but you could go online and look at all the grades in our portal, that there's an ability to do that. For me, it really represented a huge step forward and a lot of hard, hard work on the part of our deputy superintendent for learning, but all our curriculum coordinators and our teachers in putting this together in a way that's readable, that's understandable, and that is really quite rigorous in terms of what it is we're expecting kids to know and do, along with our progress reports that now also very clearly talk about work habits and, and thinking skills, areas that we covered in the past but not as explicitly and that really help a parent, I think, to understand. How's my kid doing? What are they supposed to be doing? What are the areas that we need to work on? What are the areas that they're doing very well in? The whole report, well, that we got was, was really quite informative, I felt, and so like I said, you all have the fourth grade here in your packet, but there's one of these for K through five, and working on some of the high school ones and the middle school. So that's, I don't know if there was anything else on that piece that anybody else would want to add to? In addition, we had a update on technology and on Google apps, which I had to admit that I was not very familiar with, but certainly found out a great deal about, and how we're using it. It's provided to school districts for free, and we all asked the question, what are they getting out of this? Why are they doing this for free? And it's not really clear, but we think maybe there is some goodness in their, in their heart in terms of wanting to help educators and students be able to communicate with one another. We piloted this technology last year to start to work out some of the kinks on it and to see where there might be issues. And all parents got permission slips, which is, it was piloted last year at the Driscoll School, and this year, all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders have these Google accounts that they can now put their documents onto the web, the cloud, I guess it is. I'm, I'm struggling here because this is not my area of expertise, but I know a little bit. And they can work back and forth with the teacher. Teacher can go into their papers and help them to see where they are, how to help them move forward. The kids can come back and, and write things. There's, it's a really, I think, a way to, well, to make sure the dog didn't eat the homework one. You can't have that excuse anymore if you're putting it on your computer. I mean, the, you know, internet could go down, that could be an issue, but other than that, it's really sort of exciting things that we're doing with technology and that we hope to continue to do with the technology, that, you know, some of the areas that, that the override hopefully will help to advance our ability to do this for more grades and in a more in-depth way. Yeah.
Ms. Stone?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meeting to hear about this. Are the Google apps something that you, are, are used fundamentally in the classroom as part of the classroom experience, or is it for, is it for, more for, for homework and for exchange outside of school?
The value is, it's for anytime, anywhere, because it is an internet, internet-based electronic communication. And here's the most important part, in a protected environment. All right? Google Apps is a protected environment. There are no advertisements, there is no access to that student data. We haven't even triggered the email exchange. It is just the opportunity to share information, text, collaborate, give feedback, communicate. It holds great potential, but we have moved very carefully. We piloted last spring, and we have worked with town council to be sure that they are in full alignment with the permission slip that went home. And I'm actually very proud of the way that our tech team handled this and Scott Moore. It took an awful long time. It took a long time because we did it so very thoroughly to protect student data.
So Google doesn't collect any of the, Google is not collecting data on anything that the students are doing using the apps?
So I, I'm looking for Ms. Scott. Our Director of Research and Accountability has outlined very, very clearly within FERPA, which is posted on our website as required, the, what is allowed and what is not allowed. And I am very confident that we are engaging with all of our third-party vendors properly and holding them accountable to that. And I have great examples, Ms. Scott has great examples she shared with the curriculum subcommittee, where Ms. Scott is saying no to some very high-powered research that wants to move through in Brookline, and we are saying, no, you cannot use our student data in that fashion. Question about Google? That is what they are telling us. That is not how they use this. It is not, they, they have no immediate, there's no immediate value to Google. There is no immediate value to Google, but they get users.
So what you were talking about in terms of FERPA, which is the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, that's the protections for student data that everybody has to obey and, and follow. So, yeah, no, I think, I think it's, you know, some exciting things that are happening. It was really exciting at the curriculum subcommittee, listening to some of the things that are happening, both in the classrooms and in the connectivity, our bandwidth that's expanding a bit, and the ability to use technology in the classroom that the kids have and/or are going to be expected to be using in the future. Our next meeting is December seventeenth. Any other? And if anybody from the committee wants to add anything that I might have missed, please.
Okay. I just want to say this, I'm sorry I missed the meeting also, but I think there are just so many exciting things in here, especially around, you know, what it means for a fourth grader to be a beginning, developing, or established scientific thinker. And the rubric is many, many pages long and just how much guidance it gives to the teacher, how much, how it sets a consistent, high standard and expectation for every child, and how it maps to the progress report. And so it really is a consistent way to look across every child in a room and say, here are our high expectations for you in terms of perseverance, collaboration, creativity, and flexibility, critical thinking, as well as the content knowledge. So it's the how-to-be-a-learner and also what you're supposed to learn, and both of those. And it's so detailed, it's, it's terrific. And so I know it's been a tremendous amount of work and a tremendous amount of research that went into all of this, and evidence-based practices that go into this. So thank you, and thank you to the curriculum coordinators who, who worked on all this because it's terrific, really terrific. Thank you. Okay. Government relations. Ms. Stone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are having some difficulties finding a date that works for the legislative breakfast. We had, Ms. Coyne did an early survey of our representatives, and it turned out that the date we had been counting on, the Friday, the sixteenth of, of January, was not going to work. And so we are looking for an alternate date, and we'll get back to you. We did have an interesting discussion. I, I had an interesting discussion with the chair and with the superintendent about, about using the legislative breakfast this year slightly differently because of the number of changes in the political landscape and anticipating two new session years on Beacon Hill. We thought it would be really, really interesting, instead of bringing out just Brookline's particular legislative agenda, to start the meeting and focus the meeting around our legislators' priorities and expectations for, for their new legislative sessions, where they were, how they were feeling. There's going to be new leadership in the state senate, and so we are hoping, when we get a date, to, to talk to all of them about bringing, bringing more of, of their life to us rather than spending most of the time on, on our priorities for them, although we will certainly have time to do that as well.
Questions?
Yeah, so it's definitely not on the sixteenth?
I think we cannot do it on the sixteenth. Is that right?
Or is that?
If, if we can find a date that, around that same time, that works for everybody, and we already know Dr. Lupini's schedule, so we're trying to work within that. If there is a better date, then, then we may change it, but we may still stick with the fifteenth despite the members who said they couldn't be here.
Okay. Anyone else? Negotiations. Ms. Stone?
Thank you. Again, Madam Chair, we, I, I have nothing to report that is different from the last time. We have another meeting coming up next week.
Policy review? Ms. Cox?
The policy review subcommittee hasn't met since our last school committee meeting. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, November nineteenth, at eight thirty. We will be looking again at Section J seven, Student Discipline and Conduct, and very much hope to be able to bring that to you at our next meeting for a first reading.
Additional liaisons or updates? Dr. Jackson?
So I have two. I was unable to attend the last CPAC meeting, but there's one coming up next Friday, the twenty-first, at eight thirty. So I will attend that and bring you a report at the next meeting. I also had the pleasure, I'll call it. We'll call it pleasure, it was lovely, to attend the joint Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents meeting.
First of all, as a first-year member, you get credit for just knowing what the acronym is.
I'm working on that.
Exciting.
Got to attend with Dr. Lupini and also got to hear our amazing students from the high school perform. It was really, actually quite fun, and got to meet a lot of our peers and colleagues around the state. Specifically, my role there was also to vote on behalf of the school committee for the resolutions put forth by the Massachusetts Association of School Committee members. There were seven. The one where we suggested proposed language to one that was originally put forth by Framingham did get approved around transparency and out-of-district placement costs. Our language got approved and passed, yes.
Excellent recruiting outing.
Yeah. I got a lot of feedback on my participation for that one. And what I will provide you, once they have put out all of the official language, because there were lots of amendments, of amendments, of amendments, and so I kind of lost track on some of the other resolutions, I will share them with the school committee and, and post them wherever appropriate. There is one that I just want to highlight that was changed significantly, which was, I think originally, the Resolution Number Seven, which originally was asking for more participation around, by the state, around issues of assessment in particular and around the core curriculum. It became a resolution that asked for a reexamination of the core, of the core, common core, and of our assessment systems, at which point I abstained on behalf of this committee because I felt like I needed to bring that resolution to you before I actually voted either way. But I will also share that language. But on the whole, the ones that we wanted me to vote yes for, I did, and they passed, and only one or two did not, but they weren't of great consequence to our perspective. So that was it.
Have our thanks for sure. Questions for Dr. Jackson? Oh, okay. Well done. Thank you very much for your service. Any other additional liaison reports over here? Okay. Ms. Scotto?
I have actually three liaison reports. Last Monday night, the Brookline Education Foundation met, and there was a presentation there by Deb Holman, the headmaster at the high school, and she was talking about some of the exciting projects that Brookline Education Foundation has been involved in, and in some cases Twenty-First Century Fund. She mentioned the BHS 2020 Working Groups, which started right as she came in September of 2013, and they were looking, and this was part of her entry plan, and they were looking at issues of, they surveyed students about things like freedom and responsibility, et cetera, et cetera, and trends and patterns that were happening. And they decided, as a result of all of this, to look for seven or eight areas to work on. And one of the areas there, there's a working group looking at is after-school supports. What, what kinds of supports need to be in place for students? We are, at the high school, capturing many students who are involved in after-school activities and after-school help, but there are some who do in fact need help and aren't being captured, so there's some effort with that. There is, there are people working on a STEAM initiative, and it revolves around space in the bottom of the Unified Arts Building where...
Should we say what STEAM is?
STEAM. Oh, science, technology, arts. What's the E, E, edu, engineering, arts, and mathematics.
It's a group effort.
It's a group effort, yeah. But there is a makerspace in the basement of, something that's becoming a makerspace, which is very exciting because kids are working on various kinds of projects, and if you know the concept of makerspace, it's really almost a space where creative projects can develop, often involving construction and so forth and so on. It sounded very exciting. There are, there's also a group looking at senior year alternatives, things like independent projects or apprenticeship, apprenticeships. There are summer workshops that the teachers are having with these working groups, and they focus on things like faculty learning. There were guest speakers who were attempting to answer questions like, what do we need to know to educate the Twenty-First Century students who are coming to us? And also, what do we need to learn right this minute? Some of these guest speakers were, were people from outside the school, but some of them were teachers who just had good ideas that they wanted to share, lots of things, you know, about using differentiated instruction or flipped classrooms, whatever a teacher felt really excited about that they wanted to share with other teachers. So there are many, many exciting things that are happening at the high school. Within the Brookline Education itself, they are working this year to increase their fundraising, and so some time was, was spent on that. And they're also working to help the parents in the schools really be aware of the Brookline Education Foundation and the work they do. Of course, many people already know about that, but there, but not every parent does, and it's an organization that uses its money well to really support the school system and the teachers in it. I also went to the enrichment and challenge support parent advisory meeting, and the group was really focusing on the parent breakfasts that are happening at the K to eight schools in the next month or so, and what kinds of things they wanted the, the parents to understand about the program, and what, what kind of expectations parents should have. One of the things that was mentioned that I think is an important one is that for, parents are always coming up to other parents whose children they think are, quote, "in the program" and saying, how do I get my child into the enrichment and challenge support program? Well, in fact, if your child attends Brookline schools, they are part of that program. Those, the program works for every child. In some cases, the teachers are working with the ECS support teachers to do projects in their classroom that will provide enrichment for every student and things that will catch the imagination of every student and make them think more deeply. It's not a program you are accepted into, but it is a program that is enriching the classroom for everyone. Not that there aren't small groups, but many of those small groups are simply drawn from general kids in the classroom who've shown particular interest in certain areas. So that whole sense of this is an elitist program is not the way it functions in the schools here, and the parents are interested in getting that message across to the wider school community. And finally, let's see, that was Monday and Tuesday. On Wednesday, I went to the Council on Aging, and...
Your portfolio knows no limits.
Right. Every, every kind of thing. But the Council on Aging was, was interesting because in the, at the end of the meeting, there were questions, some questions that came up about the override, and Nancy Daly from the Board of Selectmen was there and talked about the fact that the override study committee, the override, the override is something that is the responsibility of the selectmen to come up with what the vote is, and that, and, and she asked them for their input. And of course, one of the things that the, the Council on Aging is interested in has to do with what kinds of supports other than the schools might be in the override. So this was one of the things that they were thinking a little bit about, because an override is not necessarily only a school override, it could be a town override, and this is not anything that the school committee can control. The override, the vote for an override is a selectmen's issue, and she made that very clear to, clear to the people who were at this meeting. And other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Stone?
I don't have a question. I wanted to thank Ms. Scott because you reminded me that I in fact had attended the Twenty-First Century Fund board meeting in, in lieu of our usual representative there, Ms. Charlofsky. And you've just given my report because Deb Holman, the headmaster, was at the Twenty-First Century Fund. Fund immediately prior to going over to the Brookline Education Foundation
Right.
and delivered much the same talk to the 21st Century Fund and what was going on in her, her part of the high, all over the high school and avenues that they might take, pieces of that that they might choose to get involved with as a foundation. So thank you very much for that update.
Good. Any final liaisons? All righty. Thank you very much. I guess the last, the only thing that I will say is that we had well-attended office hours in the previous hour from five to six tonight. Again, the point of office hours is that we have gotten feedback that our traditional structures of public comment and public hearings are too rigid because we don't comment on them, and so people wanted an opportunity to have a dialogue and a Q and A, free-ranging, and so we had a lot of good ideas shared. We had people from the high school, from the Baker School, from the Pierce School, there might have been others, but those are the folks who identified themselves. And it was a great back and forth between the school committee, I think we had seven school committee members there, and over a dozen people from the public, which was terrific. So thank you to everybody who came. Okay, time for public comment. Mr. Ames, thank you for trying to give me the sheet earlier. We're ready now, though. Thank you, Ms. Coin. Okay, so we have 15 minutes budgeted for public comment, three to five minutes per person, depending on the number of speakers. We have six speakers, so more on the three side than the five side. As is our custom, I guess I just said this, we don't comment on public comment, but we are appreciative for you to come, and we're happy to hear your thoughts. So I can give you a two-minute warning and a, sorry, a one-minute warning and a time's up. So please go ahead. Mr., so we'll start with Brooks Ames. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. I am a Heath parent of two girls. I'm also a graduate of Heath School. I grew up in Brookline. At the end of the school year last year, my daughter brought home a textbook, and in the textbook, I found some things that really bothered me. The textbook basically was teaching a view of slavery that has been discredited for a very long time. It said things like slaves were treated well or cruelly, depending on who their masters were. It said things like some planters were proud of how fairly they treated their slaves. And so I took it to the classroom teacher and got bounced around the system a little bit. Now, what bothers me about this book is that it's the way we're teaching about racism. Slavery was a racist system. It was a cruel system. It was an evil system. And when you start talking about good slave owners and bad slave owners and happy slaves and slaves that weren't so happy, you're completely missing the point. And the fact that this textbook was in our schools for 10 years is a system failure. It's an organizational failure, and I would like to see some accountability from the top. I don't appreciate that when this issue was brought up multiple times and a meeting was requested with Dr. Lupini, we did not get a meeting with Dr. Lupini. And I don't appreciate that in order to get the book removed, or a promise to remove the book, we had to go to the media. And I don't appreciate that Dr. Fisher Mueller was sent out to do Dr. Lupini's dirty work. There needs, when something goes wrong on a systematic level, we need to take accountability at the top, and I don't believe that's been done here.
Thank you very much for coming. Our second piece of public comment is from Scott Huggins. Let me stop this. Scott Huggins? Thank you for coming.
My name is Scott Huggins. I am a Pierce parent and a high school parent. I attended the meeting that came about because of this social studies book. In that meeting with Lupini's staff, they apologized for the offensive and incorrect material that was in there. I was very disappointed that they, the plan was that they wouldn't use that chapter of the book for social studies, but instead they will use it for critical thinking. Now, that is ridiculous to think that the fifth-grade kids, 10 and 11-year-old kids, can take what is in that book and figure out what's right and wrong. Now, the book has been in the system for 10 years. That offensive and incorrect material was taught to our kids for 10 years, and now the idea is we will have a critical thinking lesson from the same teachers who never found a problem with it in the 10 years. That's ridiculous. I am very disappointed that it took Channel Four News to come in and get some action, but the concerns of the parents were not that important. That was very disappointing to me. I'm very disappointed that five or six years ago, I had the conversation with you, Dr. Lupini, and Jennifer Fisher Mueller about what was being done to deal with the teachers teaching diverse children, how they are able to handle to teach minorities. Five or six years ago, I was told that there is a program that deals with this with the teachers. I asked if it was mandatory, and I was told it was not. The attendance was low. Now, in this meeting recently, it was brought up several times that the teachers have difficulty dealing with these subjects in class. And again, I asked, "What are you doing?" "Well, we have this wonderful program." "Is it mandatory?" "No, it's not mandatory, and the attendance is still low." If diversity is really important here in Brookline, it shouldn't be talked about. There should be some action. Now, here we are with, in a situation that is clearly wrong. There is no question. But yet, to take this textbook out, to not use this textbook, is a question. So I have to wonder, what is truly important here in Brookline?
Thank you for coming. Our third person signed up for public comment is Mariella Ames. Thank you. Ms. Ames, we have three minutes.
I'll take much less than that. You know me. The way I, I see the issue of the book and I tie the book is, is actually to the culture of Brookline, and the, and that includes the exclusion of people of color and racism. And starting at the level of using a book like this, starting at the level of elementary education and not taking the responsibility to see how, from there, we currently, we have the problems that we have, is very unfortunate and it's very nearsight. I echo everything that the two persons before me said, but it is your responsibility, as it is, as it is mine as a parent, to bring this to light, and I would very much appreciate that the top take responsibility in answering these questions.
Thank you for coming. Arthur Conquest?
Good evening, everybody. You all know me, right? Okay. Let me just, I received a call from Brooks Ames in May, and he gave me a copy of the textbook, and he and I went to see Dr. Tegno and Barbara Brown over at the Bob's Purvis Center. And at the end of that meeting, it was understood that there would be a workshop last summer, and they would do some correcting of the chapter in question, and that they would get back to Brooks and I come September. And we waited and waited and waited towards the end of September, and no one got back to us, and then we got back to them and found out that nothing had been done, and we asked for a meeting with Dr. Lupini. So from that, the meeting that took place two weeks ago, two weeks ago, occurred. I couldn't attend that meeting because I had a conflict. But let me say this. This has opened a can of worms, and there are a lot of issues that I think have been raised regarding the curriculum and the inclusion, not so much of Black people in the textbook, but Black people that live in Brookline, and what you're teaching our children that affect how they see themselves and how other people see them. This is not 1955. This is not 1937. This is 2014. We have a Black president. We have a Black governor. We have Black people on the school committee, and I want children, hopefully my grandchildren, to see themselves as productive, okay, capable human beings. And I want them to see that people treat them that way. There's something wrong when we teach our children that there was something good about owning another person. It's, it's sick, and I think that it also teaches our children something about how we view Black people. And it goes back to the fact that, at least for me, why someone like Dr. Mims is not the headmaster at Brookline High School. And we really have to take, and it starts from the top. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conquest. Our next speaker is Cruz, I'm sorry, I can't read.
Cruz Sinabria.
Sinabria. Thank you, Mr. Sinabria.
Good evening, everyone.
You have three minutes.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
I'm a resident of Brookline, and my children have gone through the Brookline school system. And I teach in Roxbury at the David Ayala School, third grade. What really caught my eye was the plan of action that the system here had for teachers to deal with this book. First of all, the book doesn't even have Obama's face in it at all. Second of all, the plan of action was to have a supplement and, and to include that as part of professional development, so that the teachers would get a earful of what is wrong with, with this, this text. So I presented the question. I said, "When is professional development?" And I was told in March. I said, "By March, teachers aren't really, you know, you have professional development in March, and then, and then what happens?" The whole intent here, we were never told that this book was going to be removed. We were told by, I believe it was Barbara Boxer, "To get a pair of scissors and let's just cut off the pages." That's what we were told less than a month ago. And so I'm here to just share with you, as a teacher, that there has to be more accountability here from the top. And decisions are being made, but they're not, they're not being made in, in, in the sense that we can say that they care about what the real issue is here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Our last person signed up for our public comment is Lauren Bernard. Ms. Bernard, you have three minutes.
Hi. I just want to preface my, my, my little three-minute thing, but that I feel the issue that I wanted to bring to light seems shallow in comparison to this, but my comments, I'd just like to say that I am a trained historian, and if anybody needs anyone to review books, I can suggest a number of textbooks that would be far, far better than that one. I sat on several review boards and worked with a professor named John B. Bowles, who wrote extensively on this issue. What I came to talk about were issues that were, that were discussed in the last meeting on October 30th about overcrowding and budgeting and renovation and those sorts of things. And basically, one, one, there was no public comment in that meeting, and what, the question that I had was that all of, you know, we're dealing with these two override scenarios, 90%, 65%, et cetera. But what I'm very concerned about is that whatever measurement criteria has been used in the past has been really wrong. It's wrongly predicted the surge in growth. And I wanted to know, and I know you don't respond, but perhaps, you know, I wasn't able to come at five. What, I mean, it would be nice to think that whatever, we figured out what was wrong with whatever algorithm was being used, or whatever standard of measurement was being used, and the growth will be predicted more accurately, because we're about to invest a huge amount of money, and we're being asked, asking taxpayers to, you know, increase, increase their taxes by quite a lot. And we don't want five years from now saying, "Oh, drat, we should have made it bigger," or "Oh, drat, we should have done the ninth elementary school." You know, I just, I, I, this is, this is the feeling I get from a lot of my constituents as a town meeting member, is that, you know, "Okay, we're willing to do this, but let's get it right this time." And I think, I think that's something that has to be examined, just what, what are we using to measure and predict growth, and has that been reexamined? And that's pretty much what I had to say, and I'm sorry that it seemed shallow in comparison.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Bernard.
But I would be interested in reviewing some of these books.
Those, that's the end of the people signed up for public comment. Is there anyone here who has not signed up but wishes to make public comment? Okay, thank you. As I said, it's not our policy to respond to public comment, but we appreciate all of you coming out. We know you have other things to be doing with your time, and we really appreciate your sharing your thoughts with us, so thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to our next agenda, oh, sorry, our next agenda item, the student report. Mr. Khan?
Hi. Hi. The Shakespeare play happened at the high school, and it was a big success. And in the school government legislature is, we're trying to approach the issue of homework policy, and the faculty council and Ms. Holman are also interested in it. And right now, we're trying to decide how we'll proceed about addressing the problem. And in the student council, we're looking at the attendance policy. We're more collecting data than trying to rewrite it, because we know that a lot of work has gone into it. We're also building mascot awareness and looking at how we communicate within the school with infotime. And then one, one last thing that I think is pretty interesting about everything that's been said tonight, is that there's a lot of conversation about race at the high school. And, and I know in that, that a Globe reporter is writing an article about some of the conversation at race at Brookline High School. And, yeah.
Thank you. Questions for our student representative? Ms. Cox?
I'm still curious about the data on the attendance the student council is taking because we'll probably be getting to attendance policy in our December policy meeting. So if there's anything of interest to share with us, please let us know.
We haven't collected it quite yet, but I'm trying to meet with, trying to figure out who to meet with, probably Mr. Mason next week.
Other questions? All right. Thank you very much. I know November is always a busy time, so thank you. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Lupini?
Thank you. So as Dr. Jackson said, the MAS-S, MAS-C conference was recently held, and I thought the highlight of that conference was the performance of our, of 25 members of our camarada who performed on Wednesday evening as part of the MAS-S dinner program. Mike Driscoll, who's our camarada director, Kenny Kozel, who's the coordinator of performing arts, and our really terrific 25 students did a great job. I had a number of school committee members, I saw Kenny put this out in an email to staff today, that a school committee member grabbed him and said, "I've been coming to this for 30 years, 30 years, something to look forward to. I've been coming here for 30, for 30 years, and, and this is the, this is the best, best event, dinner event I've ever been to." And it was really terrific. What Mike did that you should know, in particular, that was different, was he used as an opportunity to show them the teaching technique. So normally, kids come and they perform, and what Mike was able to do was show them how they, how he teaches and what kids respond to and what, what they're doing in class. And it was really remarkable, and people were really impressed.
They do solve that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Two of the, I mentioned the second item, two of the parent forums are scheduled, November 21st at Pierce, November 24th at Baker, and I thought we had a devotion date, but we're still working on that, I think. And we'll have that next week, and you have all of the dates that we have other than, up to there. So Dr. Fisher Mueller and I met with eight of our Brookline Fisher Mueller and I met with eight of our Brookline High School students who attended the Minority Student Achievement Conference in Ann Arbor today. They are very excited about the action plan that they've put together. They're very excited about the experience that they had there. And they will be coming to speak with you on, I believe it's December the 4th, I think that's right, about their action plan. They're already working with Ms. Holman, and will be coming also to speak to the elementary principals about what they may be able to do with their plan in the elementary schools. I did mention here at the, at the, in the last sentence of this, and, and also mentioned to them today that, that I'm going to set up a meeting for them with Dr. Gellino, the interim department head of diversity, inclusion, and community relations, to talk about how that group might intersect with their work. Because I think there's a lot of, a lot of overlap between what they're talking about doing and what that particular commission is interested in doing. So we'll be scheduling that meeting as well. And you'll see them next time we're together, right? December 4th, next time we're together, right? So we have a meeting coming up about building rental. This is just my way of making sure I indicate to you that we are working to put the rental, the new rental procedures in place for January 1st. And that will involve work with our Extended Day, Brookline Music School, Voices, Boston, and the Brookline School Staff Children's Center, among others, beginning January 1st. Julie Hurley, who's our, our new person, who's actually going to run that, that particular operation, will be meeting with us with Jocelyn Murphy and Peter Rowe to, to go through those procedures. And on December 4th, I'll be recommending a calendar to you. Tonight, I want to give you the recommended starting dates in that calendar. We are going to recommend to you that, that teachers begin on Tuesday, September 1st, and Wednesday, September 2nd, and that students begin on Thursday, September 3rd, and Friday, September 4th, and then school will resume after the Labor Day holiday. That's particularly important, because that calendar allows us to finish without snow by Friday, June 17th. If, if we, if we did, if we delayed the student start until after Labor Day, it would be the 21st without snow that we would end, which is the next to the last week in June. Our original intent was to try to start this calendar on the 31st and 1st, and then go on the 2nd and 3rd, and then have a four-day, a Friday, and then the Labor Day weekend. You know that the collective bargaining agreement requires the BEU to approve any start before September 1st, and they were not willing to do so. So our calendar, the recommendation will be for a September 1st start. I, I want to tell you that I spent quite a bit of time on this with our parent leader group earlier this week, and talked to them about this model versus a student start after Labor Day. They were very much in favor of this model. I suggested that we might look at a survey. They said, "Don't need to survey on this one. We think you need to, you need to get started." People do not react well, was their feedback, which has been consistent over the last number of years, to going into the last week of June. Anything you can do to keep us out of the last week of June, do it. So this is the calendar we're going to recommend to you in two weeks. That's my report.
Thank you. Questions for Dr. Ms. Stone.
Because I know you count on me to have questions.
You and Ms. Trelefsky.
Thank you, Dr. Lupini. On the, I was curious about the, how the MSN agenda that you described, the kids developing, which I know they develop each year, and they bring it to us each year, and it's, we've heard a lot of really great ideas. And I was curious about how, whether and how we help them work that agenda into the school improvement plan. Is there, is there a, for the, for the high school, that is to say, do we, and some of their, are all of their suggestions high school-based? They're, it's?
No.
Okay.
Particularly the last few years, the answer's no.
Right. It's sort of across the, across the board.
Right.
I remember some of the things that they brought to us. I was just thinking that because the individual school improvement plans are the mechanism by which we set goals for each year, for each school, that it would be really great if we could figure out some way to get what they're saying into those conversations.
Right. So, so less the school improvement plan than sort of district plans, they, and I'm sure they will tell you on the 4th, they like to take credit for the fact that we now have technology available for students and loaner, through loaner programs. And they trace that back to their discussions with us, and their discussions here. And they're right, right? And so that's available now to students more and more. And so this plan is really sort of building on, on last year's, I'll just give you this sort of much, and it's really about conversations with faculty about race, and what that experience is like for our students. And it's built off the work that Barry Chekoway did, and a group that already exists in Chapel Hill, where they've been doing this kind of program for a number of years, and are now in the process also of, of creating a middle school, school group there. So they, they want to replicate that. They want to try to create something that's sustainable, right? They want to create something that actually is either a course or a, right? That kind of experience. They talked about encountering students at one school where their, yeah, the morning group, help me. What, what does stu, the homeroom? What am I, advisory? Their advisory, their advisory is, is an MSN-based. There's some people they ran into where they had an MSN-based advisory. So they're talking about all of those kinds of things, and really working with, with Deb Holman and the faculty around these conversations about race.
I mean, that's, that's great to hear. I look forward to hearing more from them.
And that is a, in Chapel Hill, that is a formal part of the professional development program.
But how do we, is there a mechanism by which the school improvement plans can look at that? Or is it just a different?
Something wants to talk about when they come and meet with the principals.
Okay.
But there could very well be.
And I, I hear that, I hear you when you say, and I, and I believe, because I've seen it, that their recommendations are taken seriously, and that we work, we work them through. I just think in terms of reaching a broader swath of the school system, it would be nice to figure out some way that they could bring it to the, to those groups.
Good thought. Thanks.
Ms. Cox?
I had a question about the building rental and use fees, and that they'll be in place for January 1st. And I'm wondering if, if all of the groups that are currently using space in the schools are aware that those changes may go into effect.
So for me to say, the question's all, the answer is I'm sure they're not. I'm sure that, because if I said yes, I'm sure there'd be one, right? We notified the major partner groups at the beginning of the year that we were not going to implement till mid-year. So what I need to do off of this meeting, that I think we're scheduled for next week, is circle back to those groups. And I know we're going to meet with Extended Day, with their advisory group, but we need, we need to meet with them and go through the procedures and how we'll implement it, all of those kinds of things. So, so yes-ish, how's that, for the major groups? They, they are aware that we were going to implement it mid-year.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is the FY15 first quarter financial report. Mr. Chang? Mr. Rowe? Mr. Chang?
No. What I'll do is make some remarks about the first quarter expenditures that was discussed at the school finance subcommittee this Mon, this Monday. And I noticed that in our packet, we received some supplemental information expenditures, which is new piece of information, it's really additional information that wasn't ready on Monday. But as a number of you were at that meeting, I'm happy to report that we are on track for this year to realize a $550,000 positive variance in our expenditures. And that is primarily contributed by two things. One is the favorable hiring, and also unexpected number of retirements on the professional staff that contribute about $200,000 in terms of positive variance. And the other part, which has been something that's been quite a miracle, has been the special ed services that this district has been able to put into place to really bring the cost of special ed outplacement down significantly. And I will be able to touch upon some of that. So in, in light of that, you know, we are heading into this year in a, in a positive note, but at the same time, I, I wanted to remind everybody that our enrollment continued to expand. And I saw our most recent enrollment number as of end of October in the neighborhood of 694 students, which is an all-time high. And I did a quick calculation for the, the average class size for the last three years is around 663, which is completely unprecedented. So it was 630 last year, and the year before that was 666. So enrollment continued to expand, and our ability to obviously accommodate these students are getting increasingly challenging. The highlight, as I had described, which is in special ed area, is the reduction in terms of outplacement of special ed students within the system. As my fellow members remember, only two years ago, we had 82 students, that is, in special ed outplacement. Last year, it declined by 13 to 69. And this year, miraculously, it plummeted to 59, which is a incredible feat, and kudos, and, you know, a lot of hard work, I'm sure, by the administration. A good part of that is coming from high school return, excuse me, returning high school students. We will also be getting additional information as to the composition of the remaining 10 in terms of age outs, as well as people leaving the system. So that is really the, one of the major movers of our positive variance when it comes to our, our budget. Couple of things that I, I think are some of the consequences of our terrific job on, on special ed is transportation cost has gone up faster than we had anticipated. And that is primarily in in-town transportation, which is caused by more special ed students being educated within our system, so that, that the route is more expanded, and also at the same time, the size of the vehicles that's required to transport these students are increased. So those are some of the main reasons that the transportation budget is currently projected in negative variance from, from budget. And the last thing that is also contributing to some of our negative variances would be classroom aids. And this is something that has been plaguing us for the last two, three years, where the number of volunteer aides from area colleges, specifically Guelock, is not keeping pace with our needs, which means that we need to hire instructional aides to replace them, which is more expensive. And lastly, we're going to be getting some additional information around athletics, but you may recall, last year, we raised the fee to $300 per participant, but unfortunately, that still does not cover the structural deficit that we're currently facing. I think this is something that the administration will be looking into, and, and trying to figure out, you know, how we could correct this issue. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. A lucid summary of a long, thick amount of detail for our fellow townsfolk who are no doubt interested in looking at every jot and tittle. Mr. Rowe, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. I do want to reiterate the, the significant point that Mr. Chang pointed out, and I have, we have a couple of slides here that, but if we look at the pattern that we've seen in our special education private placements over the last three years, we really see that the work that the special education staff, really working with regular education staff, in terms of the program building that's happened within the schools, to help maintain students in appropriate placements in the, in the community, in the schools, as well as at the high school, bringing some students back, which was a significant piece of that dropped last year down to the 69. What we're seeing this year is, is 59 students. And so that really affects the number that we see, I don't know if my pointer's working. That affects the number when you see under services, the projection that shows $334,000 positive variance. That's attributed to the opportunity.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We can't have interruptions in the middle of our presentations, sir. We can't have interruptions in the middle. You can wait until the end of the present, presentation if you need to do something. That's not how we do things here. I'm sorry, Mr. Rowe, please.
That's okay. The, the $334,000 service variance you see is savings attributable to the, to the low number of students in our private placement. So it's really the building of the capacity in-house and maintaining students in appropriate placements that's really helped us here. So that our observation of this pattern, which is a continuation, I pressed the wrong button here, continuation of the numbers that we saw last year, we believe has a lot to do with the way that we built capacity over the last few years, and invested in appropriate staffing and leadership within that, those particular programs, and expanded the programs in-house. So that's had a significant financial impact while serving students appropriately in the least restrictive environment. A couple of other things to point out, and, and this is not new to you, but I think it's important fundamentally in terms of looking at our pattern of spending. This is the, the pattern of, of each one of the eight K8 schools. And what you see is how dramatically our enrollment is up across the board, and at every school. And in this 10-year period, we're up over 1,400 students, 38% in terms of the K8 enrollment growth. So this sort of inexorable climb continues, as we've seen this year with the most entering, largest entering kindergarten class we've ever seen. And then when you look at the specific numbers, what you see is Pierce, Baker, and Devotion are neck and neck in terms of the competition for the largest school. On October 1st, there were two 814s and one 813. And so that's where folks at the schools can tell you how they're feeling the pressure. And, and it is significant, and it's significant at every one of our schools. And you see it most dramatically when you look at the, the five classes that are over 600 students out of six of our lowest grades. Our class size numbers, we've struggled to keep them near the 21 mark over the last four years. We've been successful at that, but only by funding regular education classrooms. And we're, as you know from our related conversations, really out of options in terms of classrooms to put these students in at the K8 level. The average class size, while it's, while it's, over the last couple of years, been maintained, when you, when we look back to the '05 period, when we had a lower average class size, and we compare the frequency of occurrences, what you see is we have 59 occurrences today of 22 students in a class, and that the, the normal curve, if you will, has shifted so that it's got a very brief shoulder on the right, and it spreads a little downward to the, to the left, but it's much more dramatically squeezed together with frequencies from 20 up to 24 students per class. And finally, when we're, when we're looking forward to the high school growth, which, again, is going to be significant over the next few years, what we've seen from the pattern this year of some reduction at our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades from a year ago, is that'll slightly bring down the growth of the high school, will delay the growth of the high school over the next couple of, next couple of years. But we will be returning to the projection that we had for 2022 as we, as we look forward. So that those lower four grades are going to push us to the 25, 2,600 numbers as, as we move forward. So it'll continue to be significant and a struggle in terms of planning and making sure that we have appropriate classroom spaces for all our students. I, as, as Mr. Chang noted, I was unable to get full information, as we normally did in the first quarter report to you at the end of last week. Earlier today, I sent some additional information that looked at the pattern of our new hires this year, paired up with numbers of retirements, resignations, leaves, promotions. We actually had some significant movement in terms of professional staff this year. Let me skip over a couple of these graphs. What you notice is we had this year 90.25. What you notice is we had this year 90.25 new hires into our professional ranks. And those were partly to offset 6.6 leaves, there were, that were offset by 7.6 return from leaves. These are staff returning from leaves. We had 17.8 retirements of members of our, what we call Unit A, which is teacher, teacher equivalents, nurses, guidance counselors, et cetera, folks in that professional category. So after two years where we had had lower numbers in the single digits, we've grown again this year. We had 34 positions where we had a resignation or a non-renewal. And, oops, and so that they really were the factors that led us along with the creation of 32 new budgeted positions for this year that led to the hiring of 90 professional staff. So additionally, I've included in today's packet a report on our revolving funds. What you'll see from that is that normally at the first quarter, we don't have significant data because the first quarter really only includes one month of school. So it's, it's the summer plus September. So there really aren't significant patterns established for the year. But we've given you some comparisons to look at the first quarter numbers from a year ago. So if there are any questions on that, I can, I'm sure most of you had a chance to look at the report, so, but I could do that the next time you, when you may have questions. So thank you.
All joking aside, this is terrific. Thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome.
Questions for Mr. Chang or Mr. Rowe? I should note that this was discussed extensively at the Finance Subcommittee meeting, so. Oh, Ms. Stone does have a question.
Mr. Rowe, I think I know the answer to this, but, but you have created so many brilliant charts for us over the last many years. I don't actually know if this one exists. So have we ever plotted the percentage increase, 2005 to current, of our enrollment versus our budgeting for the various pieces of the system? So, for example, so as you, as you track hires and things like that, the, for things like ELL staffing or other staffing, have we tracked the, the budgeting in terms of percentage change against the percentage change in enrollment in a chart?
Yeah, interesting you'd ask that. No, generally, we haven't done that. Although it's interesting, I was looking at the ELL report that Mindy Polo put together today and looking back on the percentage growth of our ELL population over the last decade, because we've been talking about the growth of our elementary population, which is 38% in the last 10 years. Our ELL population has grown 70% in that period of time across the system. And so where I'm going with this is I believe if we track the size of our ELL staff over the last 10 years, it hasn't grown 70%. So yes, there are categories that reflect some of the enrollment growth. Probably if you looked at, for instance, elementary classroom teachers.
Right.
You know, because of the way we've certainly over the last few years been able to maintain that number at, let's say, 22, but compared to 10 years ago when it was 20, you'd, you know, you'd see a different curve. It'd be pretty steady over the last four years, but it'd be different over that period of time.
Right.
So we haven't, and in many cases, as we've said, we haven't been able to keep up with certain categories of staff.
Right.
You know, so as we've grown at the, at the regular classroom level, but, but maintained the same number of, let's say, nurses over that period of time, you'd see very different patterns. So those are some areas where we've done it, but.
It might be, it might be interesting, especially since we talk about our need for catching up so much to, to be able to show graphically the difference in, and if you did it all as percentage growth, you would have a, I think, a nice way to do it anyway, not to add another chart to your list of charts to create.
Sure.
But that might be an interesting way to be able to show it.
But your point, but your point's accurate because it was those baseline numbers that we used as we calculated out for the model.
Right.
That we actually prepared for the override study committee and for others to talk about where we were documenting the fact that we had many categories that we hadn't been able to grow over the years proportionally to the students.
Right, exactly.
So that, that data.
Right, and I think it's confusing to people sometimes to hear that we haven't kept up. But if, if we can put it up graphically, it would be, it would be really helpful for your, for your spare time.
Okay, thank you. It's override scenario, right? That's the override scenario, right?
Our next agenda item, Dr. Lupini. This is, you can introduce it.
Pardon?
You can introduce it.
I can introduce it, I can. So let's talk some about the presentation that we gave on Monday evening to the Board of Selectmen. So let me say a couple of things upfront about, about this. The first is that these are scenarios. Okay? These are not budgets. They were not intended to be budgets, three-year budgets. But they are scenarios that the Board of Selectmen requested that we talk with them about what we would be able to do within a modified 90% number and a modified 65% number. That was the charge that we were given by the Board of Selectmen. So that, that's what we attempted to do. As I said the other night, and I'll say numerous times, I think probably tonight, you, you can, you can do this in different ways. You can, you can pull out, particularly in the 65% scenario, you can pull out items that you might choose to fund, that we chose not to fund in this scenario. But you have to put something back in, into that hole, because the dollars are the dollars. And you might make different choices. I might disagree with you for a variety of, of reasons about what we were trying to achieve here, some of which I'll touch on as I go through a few of the slides and then open it up. The other thing I have to correct is that I think the headline in today's paper said that both models, that I said that both models produce cuts. That's actually not true. And I didn't say that. What we said was that neither model achieves the overall goals that we had laid out in the model that we had created, the 100% model. That doesn't mean they're cuts. The 90% model does not have cuts. It has us not able to achieve as much of the 100% model as we laid out in the 100% model, given some things that have happened since and some choices that we had to make. The 65% model clearly, 65% scenario that we put together clearly leads to reductions because of choices that we made in that scenario. Okay? So let me, let me walk you through some pieces of this. You have it, some of you saw, saw it. I mean, the one thing I want to say to this slide is just, you know, I mean, Ms. Dickoff uses this, the sort of idea all the time about, you know, we're in, we're in the sixth or seventh season of a TV program and people who come in in season five say, what's, what's been going on? What enrollment growth? Where did that come from? And we've actually been talking about enrollment growth in the superintendent's budget message since '07, '08. It was, it was detailed in that message. And you can see the steps that have been taken since until the, you know, it was a comment made earlier about enrollment projections. We started with enrollment projections with MGT in, in '08, '09. And people who were involved in that will remember that they created a number of different models for us. And they actually had one model that was, you know, their higher number and their middle number and their lower number. And they suggested that the higher number was the number and people rejected that as saying that was crazy, that was never going to happen. And in fact, we've exceeded that number in the years since, since they gave, since they gave us those numbers. So the one thing I want to say here is, is just that, as I said to the Board of Selectmen the other night, you know, we've, if you look at each of the budget messages since '07, '08, we've dedicated our dollars to the classroom. That's how we achieved that slide that Mr. Rowe talked about in terms of class sizes. And the point that we've been making for over two years now is that that's led to , to shortfalls in staffing in other areas. Guidance, nursing, literacy specialists, math specialists, the kinds of supports that are necessary, ECS. And that needs to stop, was the point I made the other night. That needs to end. Because people in this system, teachers, principals in particular, have been doing really extraordinary work under really difficult circumstances in that, in that time of growth. And as I said here, we're out of time and our ability to cope and to make do, you know, is over. We've exhausted it. We can't do the same high quality. And in fact, again, just skipping around a little bit, you know, I showed this slide, which we, we've included with a number of, of slides on achievement data over the years. And, and the point I made the other night was that, you know, we talk about very high levels of achievement in this system. And that is indeed the case. No matter what measure we show, when we show this kind of profile, we have very high levels of achievement. So one of the things I'll say next, you can actually see from this, and that is that on almost every one of these that you see, our achievement levels have plateaued. And what you don't see here is that we have significant gaps. And those gaps, in fact, in some measures are widening. And we believe that that's because of the choices that we've had to make and the lack of resources to put into those supports. Literacy specialists, math specialists, guidance. We believe that's directly attributable to that. So, you know, just real quickly, what we were working against, and I know we've, we've been through this a few times, right? We started with an original model of $12.3 million. The, the override and local revenue reduction and reductions that the two groups came up with were 7.9 and 10.7. Remember that $2.9 million of each of those numbers is, is a series of local revenues and reductions, that if you were there the other night, it was very clearly and correctly pointed out by a member of the Board of Selectmen, that that $2.9 million has yet to be challenged. That has to go through an exercise and be vetted because, as I said the other night, even on the school side, we know some of that's not real. I gave you an item in my, in my report earlier as to one example of that. We've already implemented for this year some assumption about rental income. Okay? Rental income is in this assumption. You can't count it twice. So that's, and that's a small number. There are a number of those kinds of things on the town side, and I know the Board of Selectmen will be looking at those. So that's where the terminology, the 65% model and the 90% model comes from. We then made a, an adjustment where we factored instead of that original model, which assumed a 1% increase in our collective bargaining agreements, after showing, showing the Board of Selectmen some data on what local settlements look like, what the, what the pattern is across the Commonwealth, we adjusted that to a 2% assumption. And then Mr. Cronin made a number of assumptions. Chief among them that's in here is the assumption for the $1 million in one-time revenue that we have in our budget. But he also changed the assumption around health insurance, around Chapter 70, and around the variety of things that make up our local aid. And reduced the, the projection by $200,000. When you apply the 65 and 90% model to those, you come up instead with 9.3 million and 12.9 million, leading to these adjusted override numbers I have at the bottom. And then we get to the bottom line by saying, if we look at our adjusted projection and the anticipated new funding, we were working toward in these scenarios with group two a $1.4 million shortfall and with group one a $5 million shortfall. So that's where we began this, this scenario creation exercise. And just a reminder that in the, in the, in the 100% plan, in the 100% model that we put forward, we accounted for years two, three, and four. Last year was year one, this year is year one, excuse me, of the technology plan. We accounted for increases in instructional supplies. We accounted for meeting the continuum of student needs for meaningful learning, ECS, literacy specialists, math specialists, guidance counselors, appropriate administrative structures, both in the schools and at the district office, a commitment to global education, that is an enhancement to our elementary world language program. Uniqueness and richness of course offerings at Brookline High School. I, I tell this story often, that when we brought in the architects who are working with us on the concept study at the high school, one of the things they continue to remark on about is that Brookline High School has a unique and rich offering of courses that they don't see at as many high schools anymore as they used to. And that's something that people here value. That we had strategies around closing opportunity gaps through various programs. We have like steps to success. You'll actually see in the 90% model, we proposed an enhancement to that model. Full access and opportunity for, for, for learning for, for our students. So these were the goals, appropriate class size, program development to the question that was asked earlier to support special education and English language learners, a quality learning experience for students who end up with us at the old Lincoln School, primary grade support. So one of the original goals in this modeling was to enhance to our original goal, the paraprofessional model at K-1 and 2. We have it now at K and 1. The goal was to expand it into second grade because of the tremendous results that we've seen in making sure that students are supported in those primary grades and just as importantly, that they don't need one-to-one paraprofessionals in pretty significant numbers as they get into the, to the intermediate and middle grades. Meeting the academic, social, and emotional needs of students, again, guidance counselors, social workers, all those kinds of OTPT support and quality professional learning because, again, where our budgets suffered is not only in those people, guidance counselors, et cetera, but also in terms of us not increasing the amounts of funds for instructional supplies and for professional learning in the way we would have liked over the last number of years. So that was the model that we put forward. So in the 90%, in the 90%, what I've put in, in italics here are areas that we were not able to meet the 100%, right? So the technology plan in year two and three and four is there in the 90%. Let's see if, let's see if it does this. Oh, no, it didn't. They weren't supposed to fly this time. They were supposed to cross out. Why doesn't it work? Okay. Anyhow, sorry. So the, we, we made reductions to instructional supplies. We reduced that budget. And I'll show you the example of that, the specifics on that in a little bit. We reduced the supports in administrative structures, particularly at the high school. We added the supports at the elementary level. We actually reduced one position that we'd originally proposed at the central office and did not add the numbers that we were looking at at the high school. We, I don't know why that one's crossed out and the other ones weren't. So the one thing we were not able to do is the primary grade level support. We were not able to factor in that second grade component of that model, even in the 90%, okay? In the 65%, it becomes more difficult to, to do a number of these things. By the way, the thing I want to mention back here, right? Because when we get into these other areas, so that 65%, as has been discussed in a number of places, actually, actually eliminates the ECS program. The 90% scenario enhances the ECS program. So let me go there, just for kicks, just for fun, if I can find that one. Ah, there it was. So the 90% scenario actually adds the recommendations from the ECS Program Review Committee. You'll recall in our discussions a few years ago about this area in our budget, we then started through a rigorous program review process to make some recommendations around what we were trying to achieve in that program. They have made preliminary recommendations. We went back after the creation of the model and incorporated those recommendations in this 90% scenario. So we've added ECS resource teachers, we've added coordination and administration, and we've added math specialists for extension and acceleration in mathematics. We're able to do that. We're able to accomplish what the Program Review Committee gave us in, in this model. In the 65% also, we enhanced the elementary world language program. So we not only keep up with the staffing required to add the, the sections that we'll be adding at the elementary level. adding at the elementary level, but we enhanced the sixth grade model. And we're not sure which way we would go on this yet, but it gives us, the staffing that we've built in here gives us the choice of either taking the sixth grade model. It's right now three times a week at 45 minutes. We could take it to five times a week at 45 minutes. Or some other people have the idea that we could begin to allow students to choose their language as early as sixth grade. So right now, you have the language that your school uses for the elementary program beginning in kindergarten, and you have it through sixth grade. You then have a choice of that language or another language in seventh and eighth grade. One thought is to begin to let students choose their language in sixth grade. I don't know which one of those models we would do right now. What I know is we have the ability to do either within this staffing. So areas that we had to propose, we thought, for reductions in the 65 are enhanced in the 90. So I talked about those two. Let me talk about others, the others that are changed from the 90. We've reduced, so we've reduced the ratio of teachers to students at Brookline High School. So here's the mechanics of it, right? Right now, we have one adult, one teacher, to every 14.25 students at the high school. In this model, we changed that ratio to 1 to 16. And that in and of itself is meaningless. It's what it actually does that's what's meaningful. And what we know is it could affect the high school in any of three and maybe all three ways, right? It leads to us having to go through some of that course, those course offerings and narrow those course offerings. That's one option. A second option is that our class sizes could grow. And a third option is that our supports could decrease. Tutorial, four plus one. I can't tell you today what the impact would be. That would be a discussion with the high school administration. What I can tell you is those are the three areas it would fall in, and it may fall into all three at a 1 to 16. And so that, just in terms of the staffing, because again, we have these for each area. So you can see in Brookline High School, because of the chart that Mr. Rowe showed you earlier, where we've actually adjusted the growth projections at Brookline High School, given the present fourth through eighth grade enrollment, we don't need the 16.2 teachers that we originally projected, we need 10.8. But when you change that ratio to 1 to 16 instead of 1 to 14.25, you actually reduce the high school staffing over the three-year period by five staff members. So what again happens in our 65 scenario? What happens in that scenario is there's an impact on the elementary world language program, there's an impact on ECS, there's an impact on high school offerings, class size, supports, and there's an impact on the fourth grade instrumental music program. Okay? Now again, anybody can go at these scenarios and say, I would choose to do it slightly different, right? I might, I might not do the level of guidance and psychologist that you propose. Well, that's an area where right now, we have an added staff over the course of the last number of years. We've, it was only this year that we've actually added any staff in that entire time period. And even at that, we improved the ratios slightly. We improved the ratios, but not to the recommendations of those professional associations. You might say, well, okay, so steps, right? Had two positions in the 90, no increase in the 65. The two positions allow us to look at the model, whether we extend the model into the primary grades, whether we extend it beyond public housing. You might say, let's not look at technology. So we've already reduced the technology slightly to account for staffing, but you've heard the feedback, you've read the feedback on the plan that we've begun to put in place this year. And not, and stretching that out further, which some have suggested, would delay our ability to implement the various components of that, including making sure that our teachers have the appropriate hardware, making sure that we have the appropriate software to support classrooms, making sure that students have the right kind of devices, either through loan programs or in a bring-your-own-device program. There's a cost to that. And I guess the big global piece of this, for me, in terms of literacy specialists or math specialists or those areas, is we made a choice to support vulnerable students. I think if you looked at each one of these, that we made a choice that some programs might have to not be funded within that model, if that were the model that we were given by the Board of Selectmen to work toward, that we, in terms of our recommendations to you, would make choices to support those students and to make sure that those kind of supports were in place going forward that we've been lacking the last number of years. Those specific areas of catch-up. So you may disagree with it, others may disagree with it, but I think there's a consistency to the recommendation, which says, here's the way we've chosen to proceed in terms of using the number of dollars that we've been given in this particular model. Again, very open to debate and discussion. So the other part of the conversation that I guess I should lay out for you, oh, wait a minute, there is one other thing. Sorry, I'm doing, did this the other night, too. So this particular slide brought up an interesting conversation that I think will be part of the ongoing conversation with the Board of Selectmen, in particular, the first two items. Well, I already mentioned the fourth one, right? So there's going to be a discussion about that 2.9 and whether it's real and what it means. You know, is there really an interest in increases in parking meter fees, trash collection, library, is there really, are those going to really happen? And so is that 2.9 real? But the first two are pieces that also sparked a conversation on Monday night, and that is that this particular set of assumptions that we were given, the 90 and the 65, neither one assumes that the enrollment component in the traditional town-school partnership would be funded. Now, there was an interesting conversation at that meeting. The enrollment component is part of the town-school partnership. It's not a deal-wanna. It's actually part of the agreement, okay? The thinking was, very logical, I think on Mr. Cronin's part, that in an override case, the funding would come from the override and wouldn't necessarily have to come from there. I believe, based on the conversation Monday night and the number of you who were there, that that will be, that will be a conversation about whether that money could be brought to bear on this, on that scenario, on one of these scenarios, and whether that could be used, for example, I think the point that was raised the other night, to reduce the The second piece that you should keep in mind, I think, through this, or I hope you would, is that space rental is in our budget in both of these scenarios. So there is $750,000, 550 of which currently exists, for early education programs for space rental in the budget, in the current budgets, each year. And we project, in terms of future needs, and you just have to go back to that short-term space plan that we gave you to figure out where that $200,000 comes from, we project another $200,000 for early education programs, possibly for administrative offices, those kinds of things. They're in this, these scenarios. They're not, as one selectman suggested the other night, that maybe there should be a conversation about where they belong in the CIP, continued in the CIP. So I think these areas will be areas of continued conversation over the next month, month and a half, with the Board of Selectmen, as they sort of try to hone in on what the questions may be. As you saw, when we were before you the last time, there are other ways of doing these scenarios. There are ways to take the original model and sort of do the trim approach, where you've reduced each area by a little, right? And the worry I have out of that, as we talked that night, is that you don't accomplish anything, right? It's hard to get an idea of what you've actually done. You've done slight, I'll use the word damage, or lack of enhancement to a number of areas without actually accomplishing any goals. Hard to look at a budget like that and say, what were they trying to achieve? And as I said, there's always, some people pointed out to me already, there are ways to pull out certain things that we've said we wouldn't fund and substitute other things in. And that's a conversation to be had, and I'm sure it's a conversation that we will all have with the Board of Selectmen going forward. So why don't I stop there and we can talk about any part of this or other parts of that conversation with the board that you'd like to talk about.
Thank you, Dr. Lupini, for doing this again, once more, with feeling, without cartoons. So I would just want to reiterate one comment that you made at the beginning, which was that this is about choices. And I'll use an "I" statement, because I'm a good social-emotional learner of a parent, as a parent in the Brookline Schools, which is that, I think, the 90% version, the word that there are losses, but they're acceptable losses, I think, was the phrase that was most felicitous, and I picked up on, there are some losses in there, but they don't feel like they would absolutely sink us. I think people have to understand that even though there are no financial cuts, and this is a play, it sounds semantic, but it isn't, that there might not be a firing people kind of cut, but there are most definitely service cuts.
Absolutely.
So if I think about, just a comment you made about guidance and psychologists, I don't think you disagree with this, but just, I think it's important for people to understand, you know, that we aren't adding, we haven't added staff in psychologists and guidance counselors as, to keep up with what we, the service we want to provide to our children. And that even though we improve those ratios, we still don't meet the standards we'd be looking for. That is a cut.
Yes.
It is not a financial cut. We are not firing people, but it is a service cut. And as I think in particular about all of the load and all of the expectations around social-emotional learning, around bullying, around bullying prevention, around the kinds of climate and culture and character that we want to build in our schools, we, and the risky behaviors that we want to avoid, we want our young adults and our children to avoid, there are down-the-road financial consequences to not having nurses, psychologists, guidance counselors, right? So anyway, I just, this idea of a cut, sometimes people get a little confused about what a cut is. And in my mind, if we are cutting services to children, either by a war of attrition, death by a thousand cuts, or some other way, that's still a service cut. And so anyway.
I agree.
I think the other thing I just wanted to point out was the idea of, in the 65% scenario, there are going to be financial cuts. And one can choose the ones that were chosen in this presentation, one can choose different ones. Either way, those are real. And I think that there's a sort of an unfortunate tendency sometimes in the dialogue to say, oh, the superintendent must not care about X, or the school committee must not care about X if they're cutting it. And I think it is a, when I think about a budget that funds 65% of a budget projection, there are things that you care deeply about that will not get funded. And I just think that that's really important for people to understand, that this is, you know, if I think about ECS, I mean, just this morning, I was at this outstanding event where, you know, the ECS teacher was involved with MAPS in second graders, and the second graders came up with a quiz for the parents, and it was an outstanding, every single child benefited, including mine, including the entire class. And it doesn't mean that it's not a good program. It means that as you think about some of the vulnerable students in this way or other things, you know, it's in context, and so...
Can I just make a comment to that?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So I, you know, I think those kind of overly general comments about proposals like this are not helpful. I mean, I've spent some time, particularly since, looking at the choices that Group One identified for us in the 65% model, where they didn't fund literacy specialist, I'll get some of these wrong, but didn't fund guidance, didn't fund literacy specialists, didn't fund math specialists, you know?
At the full level.
At the full level. And I suppose someone could make the accusation there that they didn't fund programs for vulnerable students. And I don't think that's helpful. I think this is all a choice exercise, right? And I've been very clear about what we chose in the 65, because that's the number I was asked to work to. And people can certainly say, well, you didn't value these programs. Yes, but, in the 90%, every one of those programs that we had to take a look at in a different way in the 65 is enhanced. We do value those programs, right? I think I said the other night, the 65% scenario presents us with a lot of funding, right? But given the catch-up areas, what's happened here over the last number of years, it's very difficult to work within that number and actually stand in front of you and say, it makes the kind of enhancements that you want from your public school system. We just made different choices.
Thank you. I just want to say one other thing, which is the, what's the point of talking about this framing? So we're not, as far as I know, unless someone has an interest in doing something different, we're not voting this. We are discussing it.
Right.
And the reason we're discussing it is because the types of things that are envisioned in here are, I think, at some level, the school committee as a group is going to have to say, yes, that is the group of things on the table for serious discussion and contemplation. This is not a hypothetical, I mean, it's a little bit hypothetical, but it's not a complete random exercise. These are real things that are really on the table. And I think people are looking to us for that. It doesn't mean they're the only things on the table, and it also doesn't mean that every assumption that's in here is going to play out exactly the way it has. It never has before.
Right.
And what we are going to vote, as a school committee, we are going to vote our budget guidelines through Mr. Chang's Finance Committee. We're going to vote a budget with no additional revenues, what people call a no-override budget. We're going to call it Vote That next spring. We are going to, or late winter, I don't recall. We are going to vote something that, once the selectman put it on the ballot, we will vote what we do with it, because we have to make a budget vote before an override passes. So there are things we are going to vote that will express our specific thoughts, our priorities, our trade-offs. This document is not something we're going to vote. But this document is, it needs to be a real document. And if nine of us somehow say, or eight, say, you know, you put X on a slide, it absolutely can't be on a slide, that needs to come out. But again, this isn't a, so it's this weird middle space because of the timing of when different conversations are happening among different town bodies.
Right.
Is that fair? I just wanted to be super clear about what actually we're doing here tonight and what this document is and what it isn't.
If I may.
Yeah, no, please clarify.
To the point of what will change, and I went through this particular slide, and I'm sure all of us are clear on this. So the original model at 15.6, elementary teachers, because it was based on an assumption of 630 new students each year. We've changed the assumption to 650. That drives a new number of 22.1. So that's the number that's here, right? The 65% scenario actually assumes that we make some reductions in those, we make consolidations in those classes as well. And remember that this is 1.3 teachers for every section. It's the classroom teacher, and it's the art, the music, the physical education that comes with it. You know, the day after this presentation, someone said to me, so how are you feeling about that 650, right? Given the chart that Mr. Rowe put up there and your comments about the numbers, right? So assumptions will change. Assumptions will change within any of this, and we'll have to deal with those, whatever the number is. The other thing I guess I should say, just off of your, is that the next thing we were asked to work on, to talk about, is the no-override budget. And we, the meeting has not been set up yet, I don't believe, unless Mr. Rowe knows differently, with the town administrator, to talk about that, because my comment on Monday night was, what are the assumptions in that? I don't know what the assumptions are in that. I don't know what amount of revenue comes to the schools in that, and what portion of any shortfall the town bears in that. And until I know that, I actually can't answer your question. I tried badly the other day to answer a question about what amount more a no-override budget is than the 65. How much more would we have to reduce from, I have no idea. We've thrown out all kinds of numbers, because I don't know what that conversation looks like. And until I do, I can't answer your question about that or their question about that intelligently.
Right. And just to be clear, I mean, the way that we picked, the way that this 90 and 65% was, the selectmen essentially gave us those numbers.
Yes.
And asked you, the department, to say, what would that look like?
Yes.
I think all you're saying is, if I'm correct, that we need a number for a no-override, and then we can do the same exercise.
Yes.
It's not that we're unable to do it.
That's right.
It's just we need that number. It's just we need that number.
Absolutely. And they signed off on this scenario of the enhanced 65 and 90, right? And then said, tell us what you do. And that's what we did on Monday evening. And when we're able to have that conversation about what that number is, we'll do that same exercise for them, and for you.
Seems like this is all we talk about. I wonder why that is. So, a couple of things that, every time I engage with these numbers and with the presentation, I get sort of more clarity on why they're so confusing to people. So, one of the things that was very confusing to me in this was the use of, the comparison of the long-range model, which is no longer the same set of assumptions. And so you see long-range model, and the numbers are lower than you would, and then you go to 90% and 65%, and the numbers are higher in 90% and 65% than they are in the long-range model. I find that really confusing, and I understand it. So, I think it would be really, really helpful for putting this together in some sort of big chart, if we're thinking about doing that, not to use the long-range model numbers at all, to either adjust them up to 650 and do 100% based on that, because on the one hand, you're talking about the long-range model, which was based on 630, and on the other hand, you're talking about scenarios based on new assumptions of 650. So I just don't think they should be together on the same slide.
Okay.
With the two different assumptions. Again, I find it confusing. Maybe this is something everybody else just saw and went, oh, yeah, that makes total sense. But, so, in terms of, again, in terms of collecting the information in order to present it and talk about it, that would be really helpful. The second thing that I find we do in conversations, and again, it's because we've all been talking about this so long, is we talk about the no-override scenario as if it's the same as the override scenarios, but it's really, really different.
Right.
The override scenarios are three years' worth of budgets. We're doing long-range budgeting.
Yes.
With the override scenarios. And the no-override scenario is a single-year's budget.
One year.
And so, again, it's very, very difficult to put them up right next to each other as if they're comparable.
Right.
Because you're not going to cut, in a single-year budget, the kind of, you're not going to try to find the savings in a single-year budget that you have been asked and are beginning to show, we would have to find in a three-year scenario. So even in a three-year scenario, you're presenting, you know, that we would not be able to achieve $8 million, I'm pulling numbers out of the air. In your three-year scenario, under some, under the 65%, for example, you're saying we would not be able to achieve $3, $4, $5 million worth of improvements that we would, in an ideal world, make for the benefit of the students and the education, right? But you're not going to take all of those savings in the first year.
Right.
You're going to spread, I mean, except if you're cutting an entire program. I don't know whether we would do that in year one, year two, or year three, whether we would phase them out. And again, I think the Selectmen, I think the community are asking for comparisons that are very, very difficult to make clearly, because we're not talking about the same thing.
Right. My assumption is that, in a no-override scenario, we're talking about FY '16.
Right.
And FY '16 alone.
Only. That's exactly right, yeah. Because that's the budget...
I'm not sure everyone holds that assumption, but...
But that's the budget that you have to bring to us.
Right.
Because we won't know the answer by the time we have to vote that budget. We are only going to vote a budget for next year, right?
Right. That is our assumption, that's FY '16.
So, again, I'm not sure how we do this in terms of when we collect the numbers on a page and do the comparisons, but I think it's really, really important that we figure out a way to do it, so that people are not, so that people are not, in fact, comparing what is essentially apples and oranges, a one-year set of budget numbers versus a three-year set of budget numbers.
You know, it's, I mean, if you let me think out loud for a second, it's very difficult to do, because the, because even, I mean, I said to the Board of Selectmen the other night, we largely can tell you what, I mean, pick any one of these, right? We largely can tell you what that looks like in each of the three years. We largely can tell you what that looks like in each of the three years. Actually, that one, we can tell you pretty easily. Right? We can do that. Many of them are front-loaded.
Right.
Right? They're, it's not a third, a third, and a third. Right? Many of them, guidance counselors, we have an onboarding of a more significant number in year one than year two and year three. So when you begin to compare that FY '16 to the FY '16, right?
Right.
Then you're making a different assumption than about FY '17. It becomes very difficult, it'll be very difficult to do.
Right. I appreciate the difficulty. I've been sort of playing with this on paper myself, and I can't figure out a way to do it, so I'm really hoping that better minds will apply themselves to this problem.
Can I just pick up on that for one second?
Yes.
I mean, I think that, I heard someone at our finance subcommittee, not a school committee member, use the word, oh, so what you'd be doing is a bridge budget. And I...
Oh, no.
And Dr. Lupini's head was not there to explode, but it is now. And so the idea of doing a third year of a bridge...
Third bridge budget.
Budget, I think, leads to the question of, bridge to where, right?
Right.
Right. So, bridge to nowhere came out as the metaphor. But I think it is, it's a really, all joking aside, it's actually a really important question, because if you were to imagine that it was a one-year no-override budget, meaning no additional revenues over what we have right now, we have the reserves we have, and that's it, and some, you know, something with the Town-School Partnership, if you were to know that that was going to be the same situation in the second year, or the third year, you might actually do different things.
Yes.
If you were to say, okay, it is a true, God forbid, bridge, right? It's a true bridge, and at the end of that, there was some pot of money at the end of the rainbow. And so I think what's very challenging is that even a one-year budgeting process, like, this looks great from the outside, but then you try to actually do it and make good choices for children.
Right.
And having watched you try to do this for the last two years, it's incredibly difficult to build a bridge budget if you don't know where you're building the bridge to.
Right.
And so, this, it's worse than that, Ms. Stone.
Yeah.
As you remember. Okay.
I'm very happy I wasn't there.
Yes.
To hear that term.
And if I could, so...
And I appreciate you bringing it up tonight.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And if I could just continue to complicate your life, Dr. Lupini. So, the other thing that...
Why stop now?
Has occurred to me, again, as we try to allow ourselves and allow the public to wrap their heads around this, I heard from some of the, what the Selectmen were asking, is that when we look at a slide like this, it would be really helpful to have both the FTEs represented, but also the budget numbers represented. So wherein, as you're trying to do this, right, lining it up for people?
Yeah.
And this is the way we do budgeting. I mean, I know, the budget group, right?
Yeah, we actually, it's actually in the modeling.
Right. Exactly.
So the assumption...
I know this is the way we budget.
That we make of that, it's all there. We, for this exercise, we really tried to simplify it, right?
Understood.
So that people could see the comparison across the model and scenarios.
And then the question that you get is, yes, so which piece of your shortfall is coming from, say, this, right? Which piece of, or maybe, well, in both the 90% and the 65%, we're investing fully in guidance and psychologists. So, again...
About anything that changes, right.
Which piece of the 100% scenario does that represent, right? And therefore, there you go.
Yeah. Right, exactly.
So, again, as we think about trying to pull all this together, so that people are not going through slides to get a sense of the whole, my sense is, anyway, that both giving, that doing it the way we budget is just easier for people to get their heads around. But that's something we can work on at a future date.
Okay. Jackson. Thank you for doing this again. As a newbie, sad to say, but the more I hear it, the better I do understand it, so, but I won't make you do it again anytime soon.
That's okay. Happy to do it again.
On the slide, additional concerns, both scenarios. It was really helpful for you to talk us through, as somebody new to some of this language and some of what the implications are, the first bullet. And I wondered if you could say a little more about the second one, about our existing space rentals being included in the operating budget? And I ask, because I don't know well enough, is that always the case? Is it that it's in the CIP budget? You made a reference to that, and I just want to understand.
So the $550,000 is presently in the CIP. There have been discussions...
That is where it is currently.
Yes.
Okay.
There have been discussions all along about, in the, I'm saying "all along," Mr. Rowe, and hoping I'm correct, yeah, about in the override scenarios, those moving over to the operating budget.
I see, okay.
But again, as we're talking about choices...
Right.
That's something that's on the table for the Board of Selectmen to discuss.
Thank you. Very helpful.
I'm going to just talk, forget it.
Ms. Chalowski, is there something you'd like to...
Well, actually, yeah, another sort of confounding factor, and something that we may want to add into the additional concerns, has to do with the 9C cuts, the state's budget this year, and the fact that there's a shortfall, and how does that sort of confound everything else that we're...
So...
Both on the town side and on our side.
Right. Because what we're hearing is that the governor's taking steps to avoid cuts to education, which means Chapter 70.
Right.
What we're not hearing is about other local aid, right? So I don't have a great update on that right now. MASs doesn't track that as clearly, and I haven't been able to speak with Mr. Klechner about whether there's discussion through MMA about possibilities of 9C cuts to unrestricted general government aid, as an example. What we're hearing right now is that the governor's trying to restrict those cuts to state government agencies.
But that trickles down.
Some of that trickles down. Some of it can. You know, someone asked the other night, what does that mean to the projections that Mr. Cronin has made about future Chapter 70? I mean, Mr. Cronin was really clear the other night in saying that he's been given reasonable assurance by the people he works with, we work with, around Chapter 70, that that 17.5% floor, that we're going to get closer to that, and that's why he was able to up his assumption. So we're one of those minimum aid communities, the floor's been raised so that people would get 17.5% of the foundation. We're not quite there yet, the state's been working toward it. He was given reasonable assurance that there's a goal of getting there in that time period, therefore he raised the assumptions. What does that look like in an environment where, you know, it looks like the state income tax is going to go down, where we may have 9C cuts and revenues are down this year? What does that look like? We don't know. So those assumptions may be open to challenge.
Well, and that's why we may want to add the state budget as one of the additional concerns.
Good point. Thank you so much for that.
The good news is that, I mean, the bad news is, we don't get much from the state. The good news is, we don't get much from the state.
But you know what? We get enough, right? It's enough. It's enough of a factor when the margins are, you know, are this small. I mean, one of the things that Mr. Rowe and I talked about in the first quarter report, if I might go back there for a second, you know, we're talking about, at this point, having positive balances in a number of areas, but if you total all of that up, it's 1.1% of our budget. But it's, but, we work around those margins of $500,000 here, right? And so, you know, the $400,000 per year that Mr. Cronin added to the Chapter 70 assumption allowed us to accomplish a lot in these scenarios, right? And if that's not there, it changes things.
Thank you.
I just, I want to think about this a little bit differently, or not so differently, but one of the things that has become clearer and clearer to me is that we have been making cuts for years. This year, a couple of programs were mentioned as possibilities for cuts. But as our population grows, and we don't increase our nurses, as you have said, or we don't increase our literacy specialists, or whatever it is we choose not to increase, those are cuts that you don't notice. They're very incremental. Ultimately, you notice them as the population continues to grow, and you don't have enough coverage for things. But cuts have already happened, and pretty large cuts, when you look at the number of students in the school, and the fact that the people working with them, other than the ones, the classroom teachers and the specialists, the ones that you have to have not cut, those cuts have occurred. If you have a school that goes from 400 to 600 students, and you haven't increased your literacy specialist, or your math specialist, or your librarian, you haven't increased your book budget, you haven't, I mean, there are multiple things we haven't increased. And those are, in effect, cuts. They are cuts to service in large part.
Yes.
They're not necessarily what we would call financial cuts. So as our school system has gotten larger, we have had all of these cuts to service. When the override study committee, the 65% group, were putting out their budget, they left many of those things at the level at which they are. Well, those are very real cuts that have already occurred and will continue to occur. One of the things that I think that has come up here is thoughts about cutting programs, like the World Language Program. That's a cut that everybody gets all fired up about. Me, too. I don't want to see that or ECS cut. But it's something that people don't want to hear, because why should we do that? But we have been cutting all along. So the real question that has to go out to the community, as well as the school committee, because we're grappling with all of this, and no decisions, as I think we've said repeatedly, have been made about any of this. What do you want to see cut? Because you can't, without increases, something goes. And I think that, I think that what Dr. Lupini has laid out here are ways for us to look at it and think about it. But I guess what I'm really saying is, this is a community decision about what, how much money we are going to spend. And that's a much broader community decision, because there are people with no children and the school's making those cuts. But it's also a decision about what we are going to fund. So you need to think with us, and not in opposition to us, about what those decisions are going to be, because this indeed is a community decision. And I think it's fine to react and to say, which I might say, I really would hate to see the ECS program cut, because I think that's an equity issue for many children as well. But something's got to go, or more money has to come in. And I think that's a decision that we, as a community, need to make together, because it all looks as if it's the school committee or the superintendent saying, this is what's going to cut. Well, it isn't. We need to hear from people, and not just, don't cut, don't cut this, don't cut that. I would rather be hearing from people saying, it's really important that you think seriously about funding the literacy people, or the math people, or if I had to make decisions here, I would move in this direction and not that direction. Because that's what we, that's ultimately what the school committee is going to have to decide, and then it goes into your lap, because you, as voters, and we're voters as well, but ultimately, the voters are going to decide how much money it wants to put into the school department budget in this override. And that has to be based on what you are thinking about, what your values are, and how you see the whole thing might play out, in a way that would be least, that would be most effective for the kids in town. Let's say it positively. How can we make this budget the most effective budget, given the various amounts of money? And that should not just be our decision, that's got to be your decision as well.
So, I just want to say one, unless there are other questions. I want to say one more thing. I think it was said best by one of the parents at the parent leader meeting the other morning, who I will par... who I will paraphrase, and I'm sure I will paraphrase badly, but who said, so, let me make sure I understand some of the things that you've talked with us about the last number of years. You've talked about a student population that is more diverse than it's ever been. You've talked about a growing number of students who live in poverty and/or who live just above the poverty line in this town. And that's from the BCF report. I can hardly wait to read the new report. I saw, there's a report out today on poverty, and I'm really looking forward to reading that. And she said, so, you know, I just want to make sure I say this and say it in the right way. One of the surefire ways to make certain that what has been a great system doesn't continue to be a great system is to not pay attention to your data, is to not pay attention to your demographics, is to ignore those changes in what your student population looks like and do business the way you always have. That's a surefire way to make sure a great system won't be great anymore. And in terms of what we've tried to put forward here, that's the spirit with which we've gone at these scenarios. And I hope it's the spirit that the Board of Selectmen, school committee, and others engage in this conversation. Because a silo, a set of silo conversations, you know, what happens at my school, what happens at my school, what happens in my grade level, will not, will not allow this system to continue to be the great school system that it's been. Only paying attention to those shifts and those changes and how we support all students here is what will allow that to happen. And it's a different conversation than it was five years ago. Thanks very much.
That concludes the end of our regular meeting, unless anyone has new business. Okay. We do have need for an executive session, so I will move that we enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining because an open meeting may have detrimental effect on bargaining position and with non-aligned personnel. And we will not be coming back into executive session. Ms. Coin, regular session. Ms. Coin, can you poll the committee?
Ms. Fox? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.